Choose virtual background. Background. Download smart virtual background. Perfect, got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, ma'am.
Hey, good evening. We are ready.
Who are we waiting for?
Councilwoman Francis. I think she just walked in a moment ago. Give her just a couple of moments.
I'll see you next time. Thanks for that.
Okay, I think we have everyone here. One, two, three, four, okay. All right. Becky, are we ready to go ahead and start?
Yes, Mayor Serta, we are ready.
Okay. So at this time, we're ready to begin our Gardena City Council study session for Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. Let's first begin. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Serta.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tam Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Here.
Councilmember Cascanian.
Present.
Councilmember Francis.
Can you hear at least?
Councilmember Francis.
Councilmember, she can't hear.
Oh. Well, it looks like she's unmuted, but I don't know. Let me tell Becky.
Councilwoman Francis, can you at least hear us? Is that yes?
No.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I've let Becky know.
Okay.
Okay.
Rescue team on site.
Is writing something to me. I don't know what yet. Let's see. Maybe not.
Okay, while they're doing that, let me just read through this here, just as a formality. In order to, and then we'll go back to the roll call, if it's okay with you, Madam City Clerk.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna just read through this here about COVID-19, and then we can go back to the roll call in just a moment.
Thank you.
Okay. So in order to minimize the spread of COVID-19 virus, Governor Newsom has issued an executive order that temporarily suspends requirements of the Brown Act. Please be advised that the council chambers are closed to the public, and that some or all of the Gardena City Council members may attend this meeting telephonically or by Zoom. If you would like to participate in this meeting, you can participate via the following options. The first way is view the meeting live on Spectrum Channel 22 or online at youtube.com/cityofgardena. The second way to participate is prior to the meeting, you can email our deputy city clerk at bromero@cityofgardena.org by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting and write in the public comment section under the subject line, and comments will be read into the record up to the time limit of three minutes. The third way to participate during the meeting is via Zoom webinar. So to join the Zoom meeting on the internet or by phone conference, Also, the phone number is area code 1669-900-9128. And the meeting ID number is 862-0726-6975. If you wish to speak live on a specific agenda item during the meeting or during the study session, you may use the raise your hand feature during that item you wish to speak on. Let's see, and you will be able to speak at that time. Let's see, the City of Gardena thanks you in advance for taking all the precautions and helping us to prevent the spreading of the COVID-19 virus. Madam City Clerk, were we able to get Councilwoman Francis back on?
Not yet. They're working on it.
Okay, let me just check and see if she's at least able to hear the meeting. If so, we might be able to just go ahead and move on.
I don't even see her. I just see the seal.
Okay.
So, okay.
We'll give her just a moment or so. Okay, so she's not even able to hear us yet, so we need to hold on just a couple of moments, Sam.
We're not live on YouTube, right?
Yes, we are. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem. Go ahead, Madam City Clerk. Want to finish with the roll call?
Thank you. Yes, I would like to finish up the roll call by calling on Councilmember Francis.
Here.
So everyone is, council is present. All of the council is present, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I'm going to turn this over to our our economic development manager, unless Mr. City Manager, would you like to go first, or?
Yes, Madam Mayor, let me introduce it, and then we'll let Spencer Dela Cruz take it away. I'm sure he's excited. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Welcome to our special study session this evening. This study session is from a directive that we received from Councilmember Francis back in August 11, 2020. And basically, the directive is asking the city to provide a resource guide that assesses and highlights the benefits of utilizing social media for the benefits of our Gardena restaurants. I know it's a long time coming. It's been a while since August 11th, but I think you'll be pleasantly surprised that Mr. Dela Cruz has done a great job in putting this together. So basically, we're gonna be covering three things tonight. First is the actual directive itself, which is an introduction to social media. And then we are going to be covering, you know, the tools that we use for interface with our restaurants as far as the Instagram. And then lastly, we're going to be providing you with five recommendations to adapt to the COVID-19 pandemic that we have today. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Dela Cruz for our presentation.
Great. Thank you, City Manager Osorio. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, also, hold on one second. So first off, it's a pleasure to have this opportunity to provide our restaurant community the access to the tools and resources we've built through the the, from the request of the City Council. So I think that we built, not only, one thing that we wanted to do was, we wanted to go a little bit further and not just provide a guide that goes on a shelf, that just provides some insight into social media. What we really wanted to do was provide actual tools and campaigns that our restaurant community can benefit from as we move forward, and especially during COVID-19. As City Manager Osorio said, you know, as a refresher to how we got to this point, you know, we're gonna be covering two things, three things. We're gonna cover the actual directive that Councilmember Francis asked for, as well as highlighting our Instagram tool, Dine Gardena, and then bringing some resources that we pulled and created to assist restaurants battle the COVID-19 pandemic. Becky, can you go ahead? Next slide, please. So first off, we wanted to start off and provide a background and platform for anyone that hasn't used social media before. Kind of a refresher to kind of establish a relationship and describe what social media is to anyone that may have not have used it, and provide resources to those that may be experienced users as well. Kind of the importance of social media. Why are we really highlighting this as a beneficial tool to restaurants? And I think some of the things that, at this juncture in where we're at as a country, everybody, for the most part, is on social media. At some point during tonight's presentation, one of us will likely get a notification from a social media app that we're currently utilizing on our cell phones. Restaurant.com found that 88% of people that have visited a restaurant have been influenced by a social media platform within the last three months. Whether it's a review, a photo, a post, or a tweet, people are using it. Very important tool. Next slide, please. So reasons to embrace, as you guys can see, you know, there's a couple of reasons why restaurants really need to get behind social media. The first one being, of course, competition is all over it. Your competitors are on social media, and it's important, if you want to remain competitive, to embrace it. You will find customers that you didn't know existed are currently on social media. And it also provides a platform where restaurants and business owners have the opportunity to respond to inquiries immediately and engage with their customers right away. Essentially, you get to appreciate your market up close and personal, and it's absolutely free. One of the top reasons to use it. Next slide, please. So essentially, we looked at the challenges, right, and then we wanted to create a solution. So something unique to Gardena that's very specific to Gardena is we have a very competitive environment. You know, Gardena is home to more than 250 restaurants. And essentially, with all of our competitors, or all of these restaurants' competitors, it's essential that they have the ability to separate themselves in order to stay competitive. And essentially, one of the things that we wanted to look at were, what are some of the type of solutions? And social media is a resource and a solution that doesn't take a lot of effort on behalf of the restaurant. A lot of customers and consumers are already using social media to engage restaurants, their friends, followers, et cetera, where they're creating a lot of, a very unique environment for folks to engage with. And that's what social media as a platform really does, and that's why it's so essential. Customers are already doing it, and what most restaurants really don't realize is they're doing it sometimes without their knowledge, and it's a very, very beneficial tool. Go ahead, next slide. So we wanted to kind of reiterate, right, reiterate the concept of how social media and its presence is building in popularity. And then we wanted to look at, so one thing that we did is we submitted a survey to our Gardena restaurant community, and based on that survey, we took some results from it, right? And we extracted those results because we wanted to listen to the actual restaurant community and essentially build a tool with the consensus of their feedback, instead of just building something unilaterally that did not include or incorporate what they were looking for. And one of the things we found out was that restaurants are really essentially using three tools. They're using Twitter, they're using Facebook, and they're using Instagram. And we're gonna cover those in brief during tonight's presentation. Becky, next slide. So examining the big three, you know, very quickly, Facebook is a unique social media platform that's really about profiles. It's about building a profile, not only for the individual user, but businesses themselves can also use it to build a profile, to engage their customers, their followers, to run promotions. And you know, as of today, Facebook as a platform has more than 2 billion users, so it's probably the most utilized social media platform on the planet. Instagram is all about documenting the lives of the users, right? Whether it's someone showing the restaurants that they're going to, or the parties they're going to, or the experiences they have. But essentially, in response to restaurants, it's really about people highlighting the food, the drink, and the culture, and the experience that they have while engaging in that restaurant. And then Twitter ultimately is a platform that provides the ability to get information out to a mass amount of people very quickly. And the restaurant, in response to the restaurants, this could be providing discounts for promotions, could be news, could be customer experiences, et cetera. Go ahead, next slide. So why Facebook? Kind of three points, very quickly. Customers can promote businesses for free by checking in or sharing photos, videos to engage their network. Facebook provides the opportunity to capitalize on slow times by sharing special promotions to their network during slow times of the day to push additional traffic. It also allows engagement with customers, new ones that come in or past customers, who, on why they may need to come back. So it's a very, very good beneficial tool to essentially get out there and promote your business at absolutely no cost. Next slide. As we go through the presentation, one thing that we did is we asked some of the restaurants, what are some of the best practices? And essentially, we're gonna highlight three of them for every different social media platform. So essentially, the biggest thing that came up from our restaurants is a positive thing, and number one thing that all restaurants should sort of embrace was keeping their relevant, updated, and fresh. And essentially, the reason being is, by keeping your Facebook up to date in French with new material, it gives your customers a reason to follow you. It gives your customers to come back to your restaurant. And essentially, if your customers never know what you're gonna promote, they're always gonna be checking in to see what type of deal you may be running in your restaurant. Next slide. So Instagram, so essentially, Instagram is a very visual platform. And one thing that makes it unique about, one thing unique for Instagram in specific compared to Facebook is there's something called an influencer. And influencers can engage businesses through their following. And so, you know, a unique opportunity, and one of my first experiences with an influencer was on a visit that myself, Mayor Serta, and Director Santin had, visiting one of our restaurants, Oh My Burger. And essentially, we were there to follow a gal named Raina is Crazy. So Raina is Crazy is a social media influencer with over 150,000 followers. And essentially, all she does is visit restaurants and takes part in food eating challenges. And by doing so, it creates this buzz about the restaurant and the challenge they have, as well as it's highlighting the food options they have. And it provides a really unique opportunity for folks that may have not tried that restaurant to want to engage and actually go there. So, you know, as we've seen in person, you know, the more Instagram becomes a concept and platform that restaurants are gonna start utilizing, you know, I think we're gonna see more of this influencer influence on our restaurant community. Next slide. So one of the things we did, these three photos are actually Instagram photos from our restaurants. One's from Yo Way, one's from Mr. Friesman, and one is from Oh My Burger. And one of the unique things about Instagram, it provides the ability to do hashtags. And what a hashtag is, is it basically sets the tone. So if you were to search Instagram for specific things, let's say you were looking for a sandwich, and you did hashtag sandwich, a bunch of hashtag sandwich photos would come up. And typically, the higher the rating, or the more likes, the more engagements it has, the higher it is on that click mark, and you get the opportunity to see what's essentially what they call trending. And it really provides restaurants the ability to get their photos of their food, get promotions about their food out to a very wide amount of folks. And I think that's something very specific and unique to Instagram that is worth mentioning. Next slide, please. So Twitter, one of the unique things about Twitter is it's where folks are getting their information, they're getting their news. You know, it's a short caption under 140 characters, and essentially, you know, restaurants are utilizing this tool to get some of the news about promotions or special things that they're offering out to their network rather quickly. You know, a big advocate of Twitter and a big user of Twitter is President Trump. He can essentially reach over 150 million users at any time during the day by just hitting a couple strokes of his keyboard. And essentially, restaurants are able to capitalize on this because it's instant information to their network. Next slide. So one of the things we wanted to do was reach out to some of our businesses that are utilizing Twitter successfully on how they're actually going about and putting things out into the market. So Oh My Burger, for example, you know, really wanted to hit their vegan menu. And you know, they're doing a tweet about that, so it's very subject matter. Hustler Casino wanted to promote the deals in their restaurant during special days. So they wanted to basically promote their slam dunk specials during March Madness. You know, when you look at Hoppa Restaurant, they're actually trying to highlight a very specific type of oxtail soup that they have. And the same thing with Shenzan Gumi, they're trying to highlight very, very specific things about what they're doing at the restaurant at that time. And again, the benefit of Twitter is, once they hit send, this information is instantaneous and shows up into all the users' feeds. Next slide, please. So what we wanted to do is, we looked at a vast amount of our restaurants. And what we wanted to do is assess and look at one of our restaurants as a case study to show what one of our restaurants is doing extremely well in the market, and how some of our other restaurants could utilize that as a prime example on things to do. And you know, Oh My Burger, and you know, there's a few restaurants, but Oh My Burger has really hit it out of the park. Danielle. Danielle and Brandon Powell absolutely nail it. And something that they actually attest to their success is providing stunning photos of their food, mouthwatering stunning photos, coming up with original creations, right? These guys are the trendsetters in the market and they're letting everybody know. Oh My Burger was actually the first restaurant to come up with the doughnut bun burger. And essentially, that has grown absolutely influential in the market for hamburgers. And that happened here. It's literally Oh My Burger that led the effort on that. And essentially, they utilize their social media platforms to engage their community. And I think that that's very unique and very, very special to them. And it should be special to our community because essentially, it provides our business owners the opportunity to gauge, you know, new customers, to draw them into the city, but as well as engaging our current customer base, which is really our residents, and the folks that are employed by our businesses. You know, to highlight some of the key metrics that Oh My Burger has, you know, they have over fourteen thousand followers on Facebook, almost sixty thousand followers and growing every day on Instagram. And they have had over twenty-three hundred tweets in the last year. So as an example, you know, I definitely wanted to highlight Oh My Burger. You know, Brandon and Danielle do a fantastic job, and they're really one of the leaders in the city of Gardena. Next slide, please. I asked Brandon and Danielle to kind of weigh in and provide a quote to not only you, the city council members, but also to our restaurants and fellow residents on what it's all about, what their business is all about, and how social media has kind of influenced them. And essentially, you know, one of the key concepts that, you know, Brandon always hit home was they're creating recognition for what they're doing, they're creating goodwill with their followers. And essentially, they're providing the ability to penetrate new markets with things that they're creating in their restaurant. And again, absolutely pleased with how their restaurants performing. Next slide, please. So essentially, that covers the highlights of social media on why our businesses should be engaging in it. The next part is, we really wanted to take that step up and provide a resource on what we're actually doing already with the restaurant community and how we can build on that. So we're going to provide an example of how we utilize our Dine Gardena account. For those at home and those in the restaurant community that are not using Dine Gardena or following Dine Gardena, this will basically give a pretty good overview of what we're doing and what we're trying to accomplish. Next slide.
Spencer, if I could stop you for a moment here, I want to give the council an opportunity to ask any questions of the things that you've covered so far. Kind of break it up in pieces. Do we have any questions so far from what was presented? Okay, Spencer, go ahead.
Okay, next slide, please. So Dine Gardena, so essentially, the word Dine Gardena came from was we launched our Dine Gardena last year, right before we promoted Restaurant Week. And essentially, it was a tool that we launched to promote Restaurant Week. And essentially, it's grown a little bit further. Because we've built such a substantial following on Dine Gardena, we continue to utilize it every day to promote our restaurant community. And there's a couple of things that we've been doing for our restaurant community. The first one being, we're visiting restaurants and providing feedback about what they're doing to promote their business. This could be things like if they're doing outdoor dining, if they're running special promotions. Or maybe it's just a visit where we decided to have lunch and had a positive experience. So we could share that with our network. We're posting photos, videos of the food and special promotions that these restaurants are running to our network. So anyone that's a follower of ours may not necessarily be a follower of that restaurant. And essentially, it provides the ability for us to cascade a larger net out to the population to drive more traffic to that restaurant. We're also reposting material that has been on our Instagram star network. Again, our network is a lot, is much different than that restaurant's network. So essentially, one of the things I wanted to do was show as an example, when we visited Ozma, which is one of our fantastic Japanese restaurants right here on Western, how we were able to go about promoting outdoor dining and the results that we had just in the first couple hours on day one. So essentially, we had visited Ozma, and the point of the visit was to promote outdoor dining. We wanted to highlight that that restaurant was doing outdoor dining. And by reposting this photo, it received fifty-nine likes, seven comments, eight regrams, which is essentially folks forwarding that on to their network, one save, and five hundred and forty total impressions. So five hundred and forty total impressions being that this one little post reached five hundred and forty people, and it cost that restaurant absolutely nothing. And that was in the first day. And we do this consistently for all of our restaurants every week. So this is currently a tool that we're utilizing. And, you know, one of the things that came out of the survey that we ran was restaurants are essentially having to cut back their marketing budgets. And by cutting back their marketing budgets, you know, they don't have enough money to promote their restaurants or to run ads. And essentially, that's where we decided to step up and continue to use Dine Gardena to assist those restaurants with getting the word out to the restaurant community and to the residents. Does anyone have any questions on Dine Gardena? No? Okay, next slide, please. So lastly, one of the things that we wanted to do was look into what some of the restaurants are doing to adapt to COVID-19, right? What are some of the top practices that these restaurants are doing, these big chains that have gone to success in it? And essentially, we were provided five recommendations that we're now sharing as a resource and tool to the rest of the restaurant community. Next slide, please. So we were given five. Starting online delivery has been paramount during COVID-19. Ensuring that your business and your restaurant is discoverable online was secondly. Participating in our outdoor dining program. Making food Instagrammable and running coupon and discount promotions to ensure that you're driving more traffic to the restaurant. Next slide, please. So improving searchability, one of the things that kind of came up was there are so many different restaurant types within each city. And one of the restaurants had told us, it was a Japanese restaurant, had utilized the example that most folks, when they're looking for a restaurant to eat at, the term they put in Google is Japanese restaurant near me. Now, if you were to type that in Gardena, you would get a flood of restaurants. We have over forty-five different Japanese restaurants here in Gardena. And so essentially, it became paramount that restaurants are tweaking their online presence to ensure that when folks are out there searching for their restaurant, that they're able to populate and come up. So a couple of different points that were mentioned, claiming and updating your Google Business Profile, ensuring that you have updated reviews on Google, and if you have a website, ensuring that your website pages are optimized for search engine optimization. Next slide. Running coupon and discount campaigns, this is something that Councilmember Francis did touch on with Groupon. You know, essentially, to drive traffic into restaurants, especially during COVID-19, a lot of restaurants are getting focused on different types of promotions. These are just examples of some of the ones that restaurants are utilizing to drive traffic. However, you can also get creative. So one of the things, I fall back to Oh My Burger. They had a very, very good example of creating a special type of offering to their customers through social media, and it was called their pandemic box. So their pandemic box was a certain group of food or promotion that they were running, and it was at a certain price point. And they used that because it was creative and it was new, and it was able to drive traffic into their restaurant. So essentially, coupon and discount campaigns don't necessarily need to be so driven toward a percentage off or a dollar off or getting something for free. It could also be something creative that just drives folks through the door. Next slide, please. Instagrammable. So one of the things that a lot of restaurants that have found success using like social media and have found success, especially during COVID, is really looking at how their business is perceived in the world. And a lot of that comes down to the images of their food. Because essentially, if someone's at home, you know, they're looking for different food options online. And essentially, if that food looks mouthwatering enough, they're going to choose your restaurant. So ensuring that your options, all of your food options and everything that is populated out there as Instagram, where they're Instagrammable, essentially has been instrumental in ensuring that restaurants have remained successful in this area. Next slide, please. So online delivery, at some point within probably the last thirty days, one of us has ordered something online, some type of food option that's delivered online. One of the things that we want to capitalize on is just in this year alone, it's expected that food delivery market growth is probably going to jump more than ten percent, especially during the COVID-19. Because essentially, you know, the restaurants that were so reliant on dine-in traffic now have to basically diversify, whether that being outdoor dining or getting online through different food delivery apps. It's become paramount that restaurants start to offer that. And, you know, you can see through this analysis and case study that was done by McKinsey, it's the future. Couple of the big platforms, especially the platforms that are big here in Gardena, was DoorDash, Grubhub, Uber Eats, and Postmates. Next slide, please. To give you a visual of what these platforms look like, these are all of our Gardena restaurants and how they look on each one of those social media apps. So as you can see, Almondine is using DoorDash as a platform. Auntie's Cafe is on Grubhub, Soul Food Shack is on Uber Eats, and The Pan is on Postmates. And one of the unique things about the different platforms is some restaurants are on one specific platform and they're not on the others. But some restaurants have decided to be on all the platforms. So it really provides the unique ability to tap into different markets because not every individual consumer is utilizing the same platform. Next slide, please. So the outdoor dining program is something that Community Development launched, you know, about a month ago. And as of today, we now have thirty participating restaurants engaged in the outdoor dining program, and it continues to grow week over week. One of the things that we were able to do to kind of focus the attention on outdoor dining was we created an outdoor dining map. And we shared that through all of our different social media platforms and made it searchable. One unique thing that we definitely got a shout out from the city of Hawthorne, they reached out to the EOC and I, and wanted to know how we were doing that. And, you know, to have a nearby city reach out to us to basically tell us, hey, you're kind of leading the way. You know, it feels good to hear that. And I think the restaurants are starting to get more involved and willing to adopt programs like these because they see how beneficial it can be to their business. Next slide, please. So Yelp, you know, a lot of folks have said that Yelp has not remained instrumental to restaurant success. And I don't necessarily find that to be the case, you know, especially when it comes to local restaurants, you know. We fall back on the example of Yo Way. Yo Way received the top one hundred places to eat in two thousand and eighteen, and one out of one hundred restaurants in our entire country that were chosen by Yelp as a top eatery. And essentially, what that does is that's their claim to fame. And folks look for these type of restaurants that have five-star reviews, over eight hundred different descriptions, photos, reviews, customer reviews, as well as the feedback and follow-up from the restaurant owner himself. And I think that that has remained paramount to increasing the traffic to some of our mom and pop restaurants. This past year, Rice Queen was also another restaurant, or I'm sorry, Sweet Rice was another restaurant that was chosen as number eight on this year's list. And so as Gardena continues to be, you know, a restaurant community, social media plays an integral part in that. You know, if you really think of the amount of options and the amount of restaurants that are in our entire country, and Gardena continues to hit the top one hundred almost every year for the last four years, it really shows how Yelp continues to be an instrumental tool in assisting our restaurant community. Next slide, please. So this concludes my presentation. I do want to let the council know that all of these resources are going to become available on our Gardena Waits Economic Development site, as well as we will be doing a social media cam and email campaign to blast this information out to our followers and network. Any questions?
Okay, Spencer, thank you very much. Any questions anybody has?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do, Councilwoman.
Go ahead.
Great presentation, Spencer. Good job and well done. Quick question. Now we are promoting our restaurants. How about promoting other businesses too as well? I mean, we have hair salon, massage parlors, you know, beauty suppliers or whoever, you know, because we need our businesses in the city, you know, to thrive, to keep moving, you know. We don't want them a few months later to go bad and they close the business, then we lose them, they lose us. So how can we promote them too as well?
Sure. So that's actually a very good question, Councilman Cascanian. One of the things that we did in parallel to running the survey to the restaurant community is we ran a larger survey that provided, basically provided a survey to the rest of the business community. So all of the business licenses, email addresses that we have in our system, we sent that survey out to. That's everyone. That's contractors, that's auto shops, that's hair salons, nail salons, et cetera. And essentially, we posed the same question to them as we did to the restaurant community. What are some of the resources that you need? Where are you struggling? And how can the city of Gardena help? So essentially, you know, that survey will close here on Friday, and then we will begin to focus on analyzing that data to find which resources we're going to build to service those industries.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we need to, you know, help others too as well in the city. So we are here to help our businesses.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment, Madam Mayor. First of all, I definitely dig that presentation as well as a consumer. It's great. I've actually hit all those spots via Instagram and Facebook, as well as Twitter and everything. And I've done my own kind of little anecdotal assessment in regards to the different food delivery apps. And a lot of our businesses are on a lot of the apps, and they get the orders correct every time. And I try to make sure that I acknowledge that. And I will say for Oh My Burger as a stand, one of my relatives came in from San Diego just to go to Oh My Burger, not to see me, but to go to Oh My Burger. And that was because they saw it on one of my posts one time when I had a pandemic box. So they were like, oh yeah, I gotta come get one of those. They didn't come by and see me. So it's getting to reach that it should and everything. And to what Councilman Cascanian said, as we start looking at assisting our other sectors, we should really start being able to increase some of the traffic and help us all. So a great presentation.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Well, I have a comment, more or less, not so much a question. Spencer, I thank you for this presentation. It was excellent. And you went beyond my expectation. And this was bullet point number four, when I talked about, months ago, about the Business Revitalization Task Force. This is one of the things that, one of the areas I wanted to cover. And you've done a very good job of that. I hope, an excellent job, beyond very good. And I, it's my hope that this information, as you said, will get out to our restaurant owners and other businesses as well. And I think there may be some apprehension about social media, but I don't think we need to be afraid of it. After all, it's advertisements, free publicity, and you really can't go wrong. This is where the world and the group of people that have the discretionary funds, that's where they get their news, they get all their information from social media. And I happen to look at TripAdvisor, one of the other media platforms, and I forgot restaurants near me, and just about every restaurant in Gardena, a number of them popped up. And that's, you know, so when people are traveling in from out of town, they want someplace to eat though, they can Google TripAdvisor. So I was wondering, have you looked at other, besides your social media, because there are other media platforms as well? But, and we need to figure out a way to get this to our other businesses, maybe through the Business Advisory Council. Maybe they can help spread the information out, or there's a lot of things we can do to help people understand that this is the way, the future is the way to go. And if we're going to survive even beyond the pandemic, we got to start thinking smart, just as you said. So thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. And Councilmember Francis, I have to thank you because, you know, you kind of challenged me in a way that this was a newer idea or concept for me. I understand social media by far. And I have to give a lot of credit to Alyssa Palma and Sydney Overly in the City Manager's Office as well. Because by all means, I did not understand social media at the level that I do now today. And one of the things that this was able to do is, I think that when we build tools and resources for the rest of our business community, we're going to take the level of effort that was put into promoting tools and resources for the restaurant community into them. And I think by doing that, you know, we're spending the time to find what the restaurants actually, or the businesses actually need, as opposed to just creating something unilaterally and handing it off without really understanding what their needs are. So I have to thank you, as well as the rest of the council, for really challenging, you know, the city manager and myself to deliver that.
Okay.
Together.
Go ahead. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
I was just saying, we're all in this together, and we really have to work to help each other because we'll either rise together or we'll sink.
Yeah.
Spencer, I have a couple of questions. How long have we been doing the Dine Gardena?
Since September of last year, September twelfth.
September of twenty, of two thousand and nineteen?
Two thousand and nineteen. We launched Dine Gardena. We launched Dine Gardena right before we launched Restaurant Week, and last year's Restaurant Week started on October 22nd.
Right, okay. And then the outdoor dining program, when did we launch that?
That was, I believe, the first week of August.
August 2020. And of the 250 restaurants that you reached out to, I noticed in the survey, only 26 responded. So this survey is based off 26 restaurants?
Correct. So that's actually a very good point, Mayor Serta. So one of the things that we realized by doing this survey was, we blasted out to all of the restaurant email addresses. So although we might have email addresses for each individual restaurant, some of those email addresses are broken, they're not updated, or they're going to the wrong person. So I've already had a conversation with Raymond Bergman in Community Development, as well as Alex Pinto in IT, to look at, when we go forward with our business license renewal at the end of the year, are we ensuring that we have a field that captures an email address and verifies that that email address is correct, so that what we go forward through next year, that these emails are landing in the right hands? And I think during COVID-19, that's even more important.
Okay, okay. No, I think you're absolutely right, because I guess I was wondering that too, because, like you said, over the course of a year, sometimes people do change emails and, you know, kind of go from there. So, okay, well, great. Well, once again, I don't know if there are any more questions, but you're right, you did a fabulous job.
I have a quick comment, Madam Mayor.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Okay, so real quickly, Spencer kind of said it in his presentation about how Hawthorne called us to find out what we were doing. And it doesn't matter whether it's one department or another, like the police department or Community Development, or human resources, anything that we do right now, we tend to be at the forefront of everything, and everybody looks to us. So we have to thank the leadership of our city for doing and making things happen. You know, we do food giveaways, we do backpack giveaways, we do, you know, groceries. Spencer has done this great presentation for us, and we've been doing this before, but it's even gotten better. But we're always at the forefront of everything, and I hope that the people in the city understand how good they have as far as leadership and people that are forward thinkers. So that's all I got to say.
Wait till you see what's next. I got something else for y'all.
Yeah, see? There you go. That's what I'm talking about.
Just one more comment. You know, in doing the survey, they usually ask for a sampling of 10% of your population. So 10% of 250 is about 25. But the other interesting thing that came under Spencer's mention, it pointed out a need to create a better database, a more accurate database of our restaurant and email contact information for them. So although it may seem that 25 doesn't seem to be much, the data or the information gathered from that, I think is very impactful. So, because I look at that about 25, well, that's not very much. But then when you think about 10% of sampling, which is a pretty decent sample, you know, it's meaningful and it's needful. And, but the other things that you gained from it, creating, you know, answering some other questions that you may have had, or even creating some new, some new direction that you want to go. And that's, because everything is being data-driven now. If you even look at our police department and how they make guidance in their programs and activity is data-driven. So for that, I think it may seem small, but I think we gained a lot more from it than the number may indicate.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
No, absolutely, no, you're absolutely right. But it's a good way, like you said, starting off here, and I'm sure as we continue moving forward, the next time we push this maybe back out again, you know, as we're blasting, I'm sure those numbers are going to jump up. But, yeah, it's always a start. That's a normal, like you said, 10%, whenever you, you know, submit anything out like that. So no, you're absolutely right on that. Any more questions? Okay, if not, once again, Spencer, thank you very much. You did a great job with your presentation, like you said. I know a lot of us are already using it, but you just enlightened us even more. So now we thought Twitter and Facebook and Instagram were all the same things, but now we understand specifically how different each one is, each platform is. So thank you for that.
Mayor, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
So I just want to remind all of us and everyone at home that this week is Small Business Week. You know, I had the opportunity to get out, DeJuan gave me the pleasure of reaching out to myself through the Chamber President to get out to his restaurant. And, you know, I'd encourage all of us to get out and support our small restaurants this week, especially our restaurants.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. At this point, let's see, Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public that wants to comment on our study session?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, is there anything you need to add before we adjourn this portion here?
No, Madam Mayor, I just want to thank Spencer again for a job well done. The presentation was terrific. The pictures were very graphic as far as food is concerned. I got hungry.
You hungry?
Yes. That's all we have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. So this concludes this portion here of our study session. I'm going to ask everyone, if you can please stay logged on, our city clerk will need a couple of moments to switch us from study session mode to beginning portion of our council meeting before closed session. So everybody just hold on for a second until she says we're ready to start back, okay?